All right, let's call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted at Milton City Hall, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and also hometown East Hardware.
Approval of the agenda.
So move second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries, and we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have two proclamations. One is to acknowledge and proclaim National Hispanic American Heritage Month, September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas on September seventeenth, nineteen sixty-seven, President Lyndon B. Johnson signed into law the National Hispanic Heritage Week bill, which authorized the president to designate the week of September fifteenth as National Hispanic Heritage Week, which was first observed in nineteen sixty-eight. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald W. Reagan signed into law the creation of National Hispanic Heritage Month, U.S. Representative Esteban Torres, a proponent of the bill, noted that supporters want the American people to learn of our heritage. We want the public to know that we share a legacy with the rest of the country, a legacy that includes includes artists, writers, Olympic champions, and leaders in business, government, cinema, and science. And whereas the City of Milton is honored to join the federal government and citizens throughout the country, and recognizing September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, is National Hispanic Heritage Month, and whereas the City of Milton honors and celebrates the contributions of Hispanic Americans in our history across the nation, as well as celebrating the contributions of Hispanic Americans who currently serve our communities here in Milton. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, the United States celebrates the culture and traditions of Spanish-speaking residents who trace their roots to Spain, Mexico, Central America, South America, and the Caribbean. Whereas the City of Milton invites all members of the community to celebrate two thousand and twenty-four Hispanic Heritage Month with a theme of pioneers of change, shaping the future together. Therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Hispanic American Heritage Month. And our second proclamation, and there's only two, it is International Underground Railroad Month, which has very special meaning, as you know, to the City of Milton. It's September two thousand and twenty-four. Whereas the Underground Railroad was a secret network of routes and safe houses utilized by enslaved African-Americans to escape to Canada, among other destinations, where they would not be subject to so-called fugitive slave laws during the lead-up to the Civil War. And whereas between eighteen forty-two and eighteen sixty-one, more than a hundred formerly enslaved individuals, including Caroline Quarles, the first freedom seeker to travel through Wisconsin, and Joshua Glover, whose liberation from a Milwaukee jail cemented our reputation as a staunch abolitionist state, were aided on their journey to freedom by Wisconsin residents. And whereas, while accounts of Underground Railroad experiences are scarce, as both those who traveled it and those who aided them had to be discreet about their activities, documentation relating to several courageous journeys through Wisconsin have since been uncovered. And whereas our state is committed to the preservation of our Underground Railroad history, and in fact, Wisconsin is home to the only authenticated underground tunnel used by freedom seekers in North America, located in the Milton House in Milton, Wisconsin. And whereas we recognize the efforts of the many people in Wisconsin and throughout the world who have dedicated their lives to keeping the memory of the Underground Railroad alive through National Park Service's National Underground Railroad Network to Freedom, and UNESCO's Sites of Memory Designations. And whereas this occasion provides an opportunity for all Wisconsinites and all Americans to acknowledge the contributions of the Underground Railroad to the eradication of slavery in the United States, and to reflect on our collective past and how it informs the systems of oppression that persist in our culture and institutions. And whereas this month, the State of Wisconsin commends the courage, determination, and resilience of thousands of enslaved individuals who risked their lives on the Underground Railroad, and we reaffirm our commitment to creating a more just and equitable state and nation that would make these freedom seekers proud. Therefore, I, Mayor Anissa Welch, do hereby proclaim September two thousand and twenty-four as International Underground Railroad Month in the City of Milton. And, public comments? We don't have anyone signed up. So as you know, I almost, you know, sometimes I just jump around the agenda between public comments and proclamations. Approval of the consent agenda?
So move second.
All those in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Now, we would like to welcome the school district presentation and discussion. If you have any questions regarding the School District of Milton referendum, please come to the podium and introduce yourselves, and welcome. And after that, we'll have the report from Chief Pickering.
Well, thank you very much for letting us have some time on the agenda here in the City of Milton. I'm Rich Damm in the superintendent with the school district.
My name is Ross McPherson, the Director of Business Services for the School District of Milton.
And as you probably know, the school district's school board has approved bringing to the voters an operating referendum this fall, and we wanted to share some information about that and answer any questions that folks may have. We're presenting this information to all of our municipalities that make up a part of the school district by providing an overview and an opportunity for questions and answers. But we have a really special relationship with the City of Milton, and we know that strong schools and strong communities are tied very closely together, that you can't have one without the other. And a great example of that happened just yesterday, as the Milton Police Department played an instrumental role in investigating some fake claims about threats to our schools and some of our neighboring schools. So on behalf of the school district, I want to thank Chief Saxi and all of the members of the Milton Police Department for doing a great job in helping to keep our students safe. I want to talk just a little bit briefly about one of the things that's most important for our school district. And obviously, we have a vital role in providing high-quality education and opportunities for students, and we feel like we do that really well. On the document that you have in front of you, there's a lot of examples of evidence that we provide high-quality education for students and opportunities. And just the one that I want to point out is that we have the top-rated school district in Rock County, and it's not a coincidence that the City of Milton is also the top-rated city in that same, by that same organization in Rock County. So those two things go very, very well together. And the other thing that I want to point out is that we not only provide a great service for our students and families, but also for our wider community. Also on your document, there's some survey results, and one question that we ask our parents is, are you proud to be Red Hawks? And we feel that that question really gets at the heart of, are we meeting those families' needs? And you can see there that eighty-eight percent of district families agreed with that, and only four percent disagreed. And it's almost impossible to have anything that only four percent of the people disagree with in these days, in this day and age. And then among community members who aren't necessarily parents, seventy-seven percent of our community members agreed that they're proud to be Red Hawks, and only ten percent disagreed. So we feel like we we offer that great service to our families, students and communities, but we also balance that by being sound fiscal stewards. And for our school board, both of those things are important. So I'm going to turn things over to Ross to share some information about the referendum and some of that evidence on how we've been sound fiscal stewards for our taxpayers.
All right. Thank you very much. On the reverse side of your handout, we have some information and graphs I want to highlight in the next couple of minutes. What the referendum question is asking this fall is for a five million dollar recurring referendum. This is a change from the referendum that the district has approved recently, where we've had now eight and a half years, we'll have ten full years of two-point-five million dollars of a non-recurring cycle referendum. The reason for the change is that as we look towards our future, we met with our Board of Education over the last year to discuss our projected deficits, given the state of school funding in the state of Wisconsin, and we are proposing the current referendum the year after the current referendum expires. That referendum increase will be a net two-point-five million dollars to our current revenue structure, and will represent a recurring basis of five million dollars of authority from twenty-six, twenty-seven, and beyond. What I do want to highlight is that we've been discussing some questions with other groups about misconceptions about what a recurring referendum means. The five million dollars would go into effect and would be, give the board the authority to leverage up to five million dollars in the year that takes effect, but that's only a one-time increase to our revenue authority. A recurring referendum does not mean that we'd be adding five million dollars every year after that referendum is initially approved. Looking to the impact to our taxpayers, if this referendum were to pass, the projected impact on our mill rates would be forty-two cents in the year it takes effect, and it would be about forty-two dollars per hundred thousand dollars of property value, or a hundred and five dollars for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home in that same year. Given the state of current rates of property growth and our revenue growth projections out the next five years, we anticipate that after the referendum takes effect, that mill rate will continue to fall. The reason for the referendum, as I'm sure you've seen locally and throughout the rest of the state of Wisconsin, is almost half of the school districts in the state will have a referendum question on the ballot this November that is in direct response to the state of school funding in Wisconsin. At the end of the current state budget, will be approximately thirty-three hundred dollars behind the rate of inflation per pupil, and that, since two thousand and nine, has created significant deficit projections in almost every school district in Wisconsin. So.
Just any questions or thoughts that council members have?
So it's, it would start in two thousand and twenty-six?
Yeah, it's designed to go into effect when our current two-and-a-half-million-dollar referendum expires. So that's why the net increase on the taxes would be two-and-a-half million, because the two-and-a-half million that's currently in place would go away, and if approved, be replaced by the the five-million-dollar referendum. And both of those things, the expiration of the current referendum and the start of the new one, would take place in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And when would this increase show up on the tax bill? Would it be December of two thousand and twenty-six?
So the referendum would take effect in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, so it would appear on the calendar year twenty-seven tax rolls.
So December of two thousand and twenty-seven?
December of twenty-six, excuse me.
December of twenty twenty-six?
Yes.
Any other questions?
If not, we really appreciate everyone's time. We will be hosting two community information sessions coming up in early October. On October second, we will be at Harmony Elementary School, and on October ninth, we'll be here at City Hall with open sessions to provide information to any community members. We also are doing a lot of visits with community groups and organizations. So we appreciate everybody's time and want to thank folks with the City of Milton for allowing us to share some information with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a public service meeting. Fire!
So members of the board have a copy of the September report. It reflects August activity. And if there's anybody in the audience, there's extra copies in the back. We came off of two record-setting months, as you'll remember, June and July were records for the amount of nine-one-one activity. The good news is, we did not set another record. It toned down just a little bit. So two-hundred-and-four nine-one-one incidents across the entire district for the month. The City of Milton, I kind of highlighted that for you. You had sixty-three nine-one-one incidents for the month. And I realize there's a billion statistics on here, but I'll just call out a couple of things. So the City of Milton itself represents about sixty-five percent of all of the activity in the eastern region. And that's not out of the ordinary, based on, you know, the population base, people coming into your city, right? So it's not, nothing that says that that's a wrong number, but it kind of gives you the perspective. You're about two-thirds of everything that goes on in the eastern region. And then, across the entire now-new eleven municipality entity, you represent just shy of thirty percent of everything that happens across the entire jurisdiction. So just kind of gives you a little perspective on that. Inspection activity, Jeremy is doing a phenomenal job. We're at seventy-point-seven percent of all the inspections for the year completed. And I did ask him today if there was anything unique that I should, you know, make the city officials aware of, and he's, no, it's going well. So I know Mark is not here. I'd love to watch his eyes, just in case, you know, there's something we don't know about. But you guys have a tremendous amount of activity going on, which is a really good thing, and it's all very positive, so, from our perspective. Staffing would continue to be stable. There is, and you read the puts and takes in it, City of Janesville did just wrap up a recruitment effort. They are hiring six new employees for the City of Janesville, and unfortunately, that includes two of ours that they're they're taking away. But as the mayor will attest, a lot of discussion last Thursday night. We have a, we have a path, this this whole build our own concept, or grow our own concept, you know, we've got a good enough feeder that we're not panicking. I can tell you, the well is a little dry right now, right? So if we lose any more, we might have a little stretch to go through. But we have two more individuals who are in paramedic training right now. And when they come out, they'll be in our sort of reserve pool for future hiring. So doing okay there. On the flip side, at the very top, just in case that note scares you in any way, shape, or form, we have our books reviewed by a CPA every month, in addition to the annual audits. We actually have them reviewed by CPA every month. That individual has not had a chance to get, in fact, he did it today. So when this was actually put together for the board, the books had not been reconciled yet. Changes by a buck or two here or there, but just so, these are unreconciled numbers. The good thing about the numbers, it is red, which is not good, right, Kelsey? Never good to be red. But if you remember, last month, that was up in the forty-thousand-dollar range. It is now down in the nine-thousand-dollar range. So if we continue to do some of the cost-saving things that we've put in place, our hope is that that path continues through the balance of the year. The one thing that, don't mean to offer you a heartburn, I should have brought some Tums in to hand out here. We've talked about the the crisis in EMS across the entire country, both on the hospital side and the emergency medical services side. This is a number that just ought to literally scare the living daylights out of you. Our district, just our district, right now, today, we have one-point-zero-two-six million dollars in outstanding collectibles. So if you wonder why EMS services across the country are just plain, some of them going out of business, this affects everybody. We are keeping our head above water. We're close, right? We're nine-thousand dollars shy of keeping our head above water. But the problem is astronomical. It is not small chump change numbers. It is huge problems trying to operate an emergency services organization when two of your major payers can just tell you what they're going to pay. And again, I pick on the mayor a little bit. The board meeting a couple of months ago, the discussion was, well, all right, we just need to raise our prices. And it's been kind of hard to get through the board's heads sometimes. We could double our prices. Medicare is going to pay what Medicare is going to pay, period. And what has happened with the Affordable Care Act, and this is not a political comment whatsoever, it's just a legitimate, a business comment, the private insurers were granted some of the same dispensation that Medicare has had under the Affordable Care Act. That was done, you guys all know how political compromise work, that's right. That was done to get them to buy into going along with the Affordable Care Act. So now private insurers can basically tell us, hey, I don't care what your costs are. We're going to pay you five hundred dollars, and that that's it. So of those numbers, about four-hundred-and-thirty-four-thousand is outstanding with Medicare. At the end of the year, that will be a write-off. It just, it is what it is, right? We are never going to see that money. There's about a hundred and thirty-two thousand that is currently with private insurers. Some percentage of that we will see, right? Because, you know, there's thirty-day collectibles and sixty-day, and eventually we get through that. But a portion of that will be a write-off as well. What is happening, which is kind of troubling for your citizens and all of our citizens across the district, is the insurance companies are saying, okay, I'll pay five hundred, and the balance of that bill now falls on the individuals themselves. And in many cases, these are individuals that are just struggling to put groceries right on the table. So that's the magnitude of the issue we've been wrestling with. No action, right? There's nothing I'm going to ask you to do about it. But when we talk about some of the challenges that EMS is having across the entire country, gives you a perspective on how big this thing is.
Can you talk about the effort that was put forth to complete the mandatory data that the federal government requested? And we think, of course, we don't know, we think that they want this data to understand better where the shortfalls are. But can you talk a little bit about that? Because that was really a big deal for our staff.
It was massive.
Especially one of them.
CMS, which oversees Medicare, so if you hear us use that acronym, CMS required an audit of all eight-hundred-thousand EMS providers across the United States. They broke it into five years. We happened to fall into twenty-twenty-four. Lucky us, I guess, we had to fall into one of five. The instructions on how to fill out the survey, and now it's in the rearview mirror, was that forty-two pages? Does that sound right?
Or twenty, somewhere between twenty and forty-two.
Yeah, it was, I was thinking twenty-seven, anyway. I mean, the instructions were daunting. So we have some volunteer staff that helps us, along with our part-time bookkeeper. We submitted all of that data, and it was a ton of data. But to the mayor's point, it is intended to be summarized and shared with Congress to try to get awareness of the magnitude of this problem. The, you know, just literally, the volume of emergency medical services in the country, the amount that it's costing us to deliver that service, and then the far less reimbursement that we're getting. I would go further. I don't think that's a rumor. That is exactly what that data was intended for. And so we jumped all over it. We gave them everything they asked for and tried to be as forthcoming as we could, partly because we've just got good data. And a lot of services that can't, you know, that are running pancake breakfast just to put gas in the ambulance, they don't have staffs that are going to be able to give them that kind of data, where we were fortunate enough to be able to do it. So we made sure we answered every question. Yeah. And it's a positive thing, right? I mean, it was, I believe my wife would like to kill me, but but it was a positive thing. In terms of significant events, I'll just mention a couple, because I'm always very proud of the staff, and much like the chief. You know, there are certain things that happen to us in the middle of the night or the middle of the day, we're like, oh, boy. We had a very, very high-risk rescue below the Indian Ford Dam. If you're familiar with Indian Ford, in mid-August, the best way to describe the water in the river below the dam is violent. It was unbelievably treacherous. It had swept a gentleman out of a boat. He did manage to get a hold of a limb on that, kind of that island that's out in the middle of the river, if you're familiar with that area at all. So he's hanging on to literally a branch. The crews managed to be able to maneuver in below him and come up underneath him, which is obviously the tactic, right? So that if he does let go, or if something happens, you know, he's coming at us, and we got a chance to grab him. We had a second rescue boat just down from that, in case something would happen with our rescue boat, in just unbelievably tumultuous water. So I'm very, very proud of the crews for what they were able to accomplish. The gentleman was from Milwaukee, and said, I didn't reel, you know, okay. And then obviously, you probably saw some of the headlines, Morrison Auto, about a two-million-dollar loss with their production building. The good news is, that's one of eight buildings on the property, and Billy and his team did a phenomenal job. Their insurance carrier dove in and got them some temporary equipment, and they got production, which is basically the harvesting of usable parts off of salvaged cars, if you wonder what that term is, back up and running in a smaller building that they had space in. So literally, they stayed open the day of the fire. We made sure we kept their driveways open, so customers could get in and out, and they are in full operation. So kind of a entertaining day. The only other thing I'll point out, I appreciate the time you guys always give me. A lot of us, hopefully, all voted in favor of the thirty-five-million-dollar referendum from Black Hawk Technical College. I think that was, what, two years ago on the ballot, for the new public safety training facility at Black Hawk. They are doing a grand opening, is it the twenty-sixth, I believe, right? September twenty-sixth, from, my glasses on, four to seven. I would encourage you, if you've got a chance to come down and see it. It is a state-of-the-art law enforcement, fire, and EMS training facility, something that this county and all of us that use it can be extremely proud of. It's got a lot of very unique things built into it. So if you have the time, I'd strongly encourage you to come down and see it.
Any questions or comments from anyone?
And I'll just add, I appreciate the courtesy. I really do. So thank you guys very much, and have a good evening.
Well, we appreciate you coming and keeping us updated. Have a good night. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding a residential developers agreement for Red Hawk Farms third edition.
On August twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Milton Common Council and Plan Commission approved a final plat for Red Hawk Farms third edition. The plat calls for the creation of sixteen new lots along Red Hawk Drive. The attached residential development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and the developer in regards to the proposed development. The City of Milton requires a residential development agreement for each subdivision and/or subdivision phase. The residential development agreement outlines the roles and responsibilities of the city and the developer as it pertains to the proposed development. Subject developers agreement outlines the sequencing of the development, city's role in inspections, and the developers donations of parkland, and subsequent combination of future parkland in with future subdivisions of the land uh, in with future subdivisions of the land to create one park. Uh, this, uh, subdivision is part of several subdivisions that's gonna occur, and instead of having one quarter acre in each of the little subdivisions, eventually they'll all join together to create one park. Um, and the development of a multi-use trail in that subdivision as well. There's no fiscal impact to the city of Milton related to the subject development agreement, as all costs incurred by the city outside of normal operations would be invoiced to the developer. A city administration recommends the approval of the proposed development, developers agreement for Red Hawk Farms Third Edition.
I have a question on, um, so is that in consideration of the developers' performance of the obligations of, uh, paragraph D, the city will waive this, its standard storm sewer assessment for the subdivision? What does that mean? And how much are we waiving?
He is building the storm sewer. Building the storm sewer, so we're not assessing for it.
Okay. That's the only question I had, cause there are, is there a, other assessments from the lift station?
There are, and, uh, those will be built appropriately.
Oh, okay, gotcha. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the developers agreement for Red Hawk Farms Third Edition.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the developers agreement with Red Hawk Farms Third Edition. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action on supporting fundraising efforts for an indoor tennis facility to be located at Cross Ridge Park.
Several years ago, a group of tennis enthusiasts approached the city, uh, looking to build tennis courts here in, in the city. Um, COVID kind of put a slowdown to that. However, talk has begun again. Um, we're with the Greater Rock County Tennis and Pickleball Association. Uh, the group of tennis enthusiasts approached the city. The group has begun to work with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to build a fundraising plan. Early estimates for a four-court facility set the cost of four-point-one million. Uh, the group intends to raise these funds over the next two or three years. Uh, the group also has set contingency plans for building a three-court facility, depending on the fundraising progress. And if funds are not sufficient to build a three-court facility, they would donate the funds to enrich and encourage tennis within Rock County. Um, if the funds are sufficient, the money would be then be transferred to the city for public construction of the courts. The buildings would then be owned by the city, and the city would oversee maintenance of it. The facility would be open to the public, but there would be charges to staff and maintain the building. Uh, those charges would be reduced for city residents, and then the city would hire a group to manage the staffing and scheduling of the use of the facility. Uh, the park commission has reviewed this request and recommended the city move forward with this proposal. And this, uh, proposal is in Cross Ridge Park. Uh, Paul Lauterbach here, um, is with the Greater Rock County Tennis and Pickleball Association, and they've got some, uh, diagrams here for you to look at. Those have been included in your packet. Um, and this would be located at Cross Ridge Park. And Paul's here, if you've got any questions?
So, uh, Paul Lauterbach here, Frank Barnes over here. That was it, thank you. Um, and we also, uh, Dave Ryan, um, who is, um, a leader in this project, um, is on speaker here. He's in Alaska. He's been there for about seven, uh, seven weeks for some medical treatment. But he's home on the nineteenth, so once he gets here and we get all the boots on the ground, we can continue to move forward. Um, you can see some, they're very preliminary pictures. Um, as far as what it would look like. Um, it's based on having four indoor courts. Um, once we get the final numbers, we would ideally like to have five. Four is doable. Um, three we could live with, um, but the intent would be to be successful and, and to add on. Um, uh, again, where it's laid out is very, very tentative, um, because I know we would look into potentially sharing some parking area and some different things with the Parker YMCA. But this kind of gives you an idea what the layout would look like. Cause once, once we get the final numbers, we have an idea of square footage costs and different things like that. Um, but, um, yeah, as you had mentioned, four-point-one, you know, the building is gonna come in somewhere between three-point-five and three-point-nine, hopefully. Um, and then we would have about another hundred and fifty to two-hundred thousand for startup costs, um, marketing and different things like that, and also some of the, the interior build-out. And so we just wanted to kind of show up tonight, uh, let you know we are still working on it. Uh, Dave gets back again on the nineteenth, and, and, um, uh, we have formed our nonprofit, and then we will be working with the, the Southern Wisconsin Community Foundation and the city of, uh, Milton, as far as the operational and, um, the operational end of it and the, um, the build-out of it. Yep, that will fill a lot of the, the more quiet times. Um, and it's obviously, everybody here knows, we've talked about it before, how big it is. Um, and then it will also be the home to UW, uh, Whitewater for their practice and their meets.
And then would they, um, would UW Whitewater pay a fee then to use it?
Nope. Same type of arrangement we have now with the, the club that- They, um, we, we host many matches, um, and we're rain back up in the off, you know, in the, when the weather's goofy. Um, but the majority of your practices, this past has been a premier, correct?
Right.
So we're really hoping that we can really crunch the numbers, and when bids come in, we can get that fifth court.
I would like to mention that I've talked about this proposal with the YMCA, just so we weren't stepping on any toes there. Um, they think that it's a really good opportunity for synergy uh, between the two organizations. They have no intentions of building out, uh, pickleball or tennis courts right now. Um, so they, you know, they can see kids going to this facility and coming over to the Y and working out while their kids are practicing tennis, or vice versa with, you know, parents going to the Y and the kids stopping, or excuse me, parents going to tennis, kids stopping by at the Y, so. Uh, they are in support of this, uh, proposal as well. Um, there is no initial cost to the city, um, obviously on completion, if the, the city would be required to maintain this. Um, and, uh, just the recommended motion for tonight would be developed in agreement with the Community Foundation of South, Southern Wisconsin to begin fundraising campaign for the proposed tennis courts.
Just have a quick question.
Of course.
Uh, the income projections on this, cause it says that the city's gonna be responsible for this, and that it's gonna be manned and staffed. Uh, and then there's gonna be fees to offset that. Are the income projections, are they gonna cover all of that staffing?
Yes.
And where, what's the source of those income projections?
Um, it's kind of, uh, the very conservative numbers based on numbers that we are currently doing at the club we are at now. But very conserved, scaled way back, way back. Um, the final numbers will be based a lot on whether it's a four-court or a five-court facility, because that opens doors and different things like that. Um, but from a monetary standpoint, you know, without, without the mortgage and different things like that, it, it will be lucrative. We will be able to pay for the costs of, of, uh, the staff and, and that kinda thing. And a lot, just to let you know, a lot of, a lot of the staff in the business that we're in, it is revenue-driven. It's not like we hire somebody to teach tennis and here's fifty thousand dollars. It's, it's based, you're gonna make fifty or sixty, whatever, depending on the income you generate.
Okay. Um, what is the, this is the city's gonna be required to do the maintenance?
We would be required to do, we would be required to do the maintenance.
What type of maintenance are we talking? Are we talking about mopping the floors? Are we talking about plowing the lots? What's the main-
A discussion right now currently would be the, uh, group running the, or running the facility would take care of the inside.
Would just be the exterior. Just the exterior.
And we'd have to find the group to manage the inside, or would they provide that?
I know of a few people who are interested. The people that we're talking to tonight.
So would this be, um, membership-driven then? You'd have to be a member of this facility, or could you pay per court, or?
So, you know, it would follow about the same, um, game plan, I guess, as the club that I'm currently in and the, the past club. Obviously, there will be memberships to the club. Um, there will also be discounts and, um, different things for, um, people from Milton. Um, residents of Milton will get a discount. But you don't need to be a member to play. There's just extra cost. Like gas fees and different things. So you don't need to be a member to participate in different things.
One of our reasons, wanting to build a public facility, a pretty rare tennis, but the ones that I've seen across my travels with Whitewater, uh, teams. Not gonna say free for the new members and help-
Membership, just to let you know, membership as a whole, based on the, the, um, format that we'll be using is not the primary income. It is lesson-driven.
So it'd be very affordable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So to give you an idea, even at the club we're at now, to play pickleball for a half an hour is twelve, or for an hour is twelve dollars. For people that play, it's three dollars an hour. Yeah.
I can tell you that when I was, um, up in Western Wisconsin, the way that, that the YMCA, Chippewa Valley YMCA, um, they had, it was similar to this. So similar-sized facility, and it was, but the Y did it, so they had all these courts. They had eight courts, and then like, um, like a, um, a refreshment concession stand inside, and then there was an area like to, to work out. Um, but what I can say, and that it's probably less populated in Western Wisconsin than in Southern Wisconsin, those pickleball courts were reserved, I mean, there, you, I mean, you had to reserve them. They were always busy. Um, it was a highly utilized facility. Um, and pickleball is really popular. So I could see how this would, this could be really positive for our area, because we really don't have the facilities for indoor pickleball or indoor tennis, and the fact that it's, it would be located next to the Y, I can see that working out well, just based on the experience that I had, um, in Western Wisconsin, so.
Our facility has close to six hundred pickleball members. And we've only been doing pickleball for a couple of years, and, um, tennis though is, I mean, we've got less than three hundred members for tennis. Tennis is the primary income, but the usage is pickleball. It's a, it's a thing.
Where's your facility at, you say our facility?
In Lake Geneva.
Lake Geneva?
Yeah, and I, please let me know, I'm there pretty much every day, if anybody would like to see it, walk through it. Because again, the model that we have is gonna be very similar to what we're, we're doing here.
And would you offer lessons?
Oh, yeah.
How, how big is that facility?
Uh, we have five indoor tennis courts with like, um, a mezzanine and viewing area. Um, and then we just opened a dedicated, um, addition last March of six indoor pickleball courts. So this, right now, hopefully, it would have the four or five courts, but on the courts are gonna be pickleball, and that's what we did for the first couple of years. Um, and we still have pickleball lines on our tennis courts at the club that we utilize.
What's, what's the relationship of this effort to earlier efforts, uh, for a commercial tennis facility? We had on-again, off-again, on-again, off-again. Um, uh, you know, effort to bring in a commercial, uh, tennis facility.
Um, when we first started and, and we first kind of had the legs of going it, um, it's kind of about the time COVID hit. And to build a facility is not an easy thing. I'll just tell you, it's very, very difficult. Um, but then when COVID hit, and as we came out of it, the prices were so high, it, it, to be honest with you, it makes zero sense for any investor to, to do anything like this. Um, uh, unless they just didn't wanna make money. It just doesn't make sense, uh, with the building cost and how much it would be. So we were trying to think of ways that we can get it done, and then, um, Dave Ryan is involved with the, um, the nonprofit, um, the Ryan Foundation, Pat Ryan Foundation, which is a nonprofit very involved with, uh, tennis in, uh, the Janesville area. Um, so that was kind of the, I guess, the stage for like, what if we were to take this to the next level and, and turn this into a nonprofit? And, um, then to be honest, the numbers work.
God, if there's a, this is a nonprofit that's doing this?
Mm-hmm.
So if this thing starts making a profit, is that fund's gonna go back towards the parks, parks and recs, or? What, where does that, what happens to that profit? If it's, if it's gonna pull a profit and it's not gonna cost the city anything to operate it and to do all of that, what happens to the excess?
That hasn't been negotiated yet.
So what you're asking from the council is just to give authority to negotiate an agreement?
And this would be with the Community Foundation to begin the fundraising. Um, it would not be with the group that would be running it. Um, I would, would be start talking to this group, but, uh, at this time, uh, we're looking at two or three years down the road.
I'm fine making the motion to, uh, help the agreement with the Community Foundation of Southern Wisconsin to begin fundraising campaign for proposed tennis courts.
Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. And please stop by, just let me know, just, I'll be there.
Discussion and possible action regarding modifying the commercial facade grant program?
Uh, the Milton Commercial Facade Grant has, uh, set limits of five thousand dollars per grant since at least two thousand thirteen. Uh, new funding limits should be considered. Uh, the Milton Commercial Facade Grant has been used within the city since at least two thousand thirteen. At that time, guidelines indicate that the grant was capped at five thousand. Uh, the city has often awarded grants of ten thousand, however, without altering the guidelines. Uh, the city, city currently facilitates these funds from TID seven primarily, and, uh, budgeted it's twenty thousand dollars. However, TID seven currently has a surplus of thirty-two thousand dollars, with expectations of an increase in a surplus of over ninety thousand dollars per year in future years. Uh, city administration recommends amending the commercial facade grant limit to ten thousand dollars per award, and this is, uh, with those guidelines, the award is, uh, twice in a four-year period.
And it was reviewed by the CDA, and they unanimously forwarded it a positive recommendation. Is there any questions or comments or a motion?
I move to amend the commercial facade grant limit to ten thousand dollars per award.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Stockman Property- Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Stockman Property Ventures LLC.
Stockman Property Ventures LLC has applied for facade grant for one forty-four merchant row. Uh, Stockman Property Ventures LLC proposes to remove and replace the current awning, painting of the front facade of both structures, different color. Uh, the total project proposal is eleven thousand four hundred and fifty. The request from the program is five thousand. Uh, the expense would be incurred by TID number seven. And, uh, city administration recommends approval of the facade grant for Stockman Property Ventures LLC in the amount of five thousand dollars.
Questions or comments? And he got a five thousand dollar one for this?
Previously, and that has been completed and, uh, has been paid. I think he's, we, uh, he's waiting, check's waiting for him.
There isn't a limit though, is there?
There is two every fi, uh, two every four years.
Two per?
Building.
Building?
Correct.
Not owner?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct.
Is there a motion or more questions or discussion?
Again, this was, uh, uh, reviewed by the CDA and, uh, recommended to the council to approve.
Motion to approve the facade grant for Stockman Property Ventures LLC in the amount of five thousand dollars.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application from Stockman Property Assets LLC.
Uh, Stockman Property Assets LLC proposed to remove and replace the facade framing, doors, windows, tuck pointing all brick on the front and rear and repairing any damages and further erosion, cleaning, prepping and painting the front facade, installing new glass and doors and install transom windows. Uh, the total project proposal is forty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty. And the request from the program is ten thousand dollars. Uh, the expense of ten thousand dollars would be incurred by TID number seven. And, uh, city administration recommends approval of, of facade grant for Stockman Property Assets LLC in the amount of ten thousand.
And this is his first one for forty-two merchant?
Uh, this is, I believe so, yes.
Okay, I thought so. I'd make a motion to approve the facade grant for Stockman Property Assets. Due to the address forty-two merchant row for ten thousand dollars.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five outdoor display and merchandise license.
Hattie and Elsie has applied for an outdoor display of license at their location at six fifty College Street. Uh, this is a license that usually runs from July first to June thirtieth of each year. Uh, they have had it in the past. They did not renew it at this portion. They're now renewing it now. Um, and so it's a ten dollar fee and allows them to place items on the sidewalk with, uh, certain restrictions that were approved by the council. Uh, they are, in the past, when they have had it, there have been no issues. Uh, we have not had any complaints. Uh, so city staff does not provide a recommendation, but again, there has not been any issues at this time.
I would move approval of the outdoor display, uh, license for six fifty College Street for Hattie and Elsie.
Say it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding proposed ordinance creating section fifty dash eighty-two sex offender residency restrictions loitering.
The city of Milton currently has no residency restrictions for sex offenders. The term sex offender generally refers to a person convicted of particular sex-related crimes who is required to register with the Wisconsin Sex Offender Registry. As of two thousand twenty-one, more than one hundred and fifty municipalities in Wisconsin have enacted a sex offender residency restriction ordinance. These local ordinances typically prohibit a sex offender from residing within a certain distance of identified location like schools, playgrounds, daycare centers, et cetera. Without any restrictions in place, it allows sex offenders to reside anywhere in the city, which can set offenders up for failure on their path to rehabilitation and place community members in an unsafe setting. Wisconsin statutes do not limit where most sex offenders may live. State law restricts only where a sexually violent person on supervised release may live and where Department of Corrections may initially place sex offenders released to parole or extended supervision. Sex offenders have a high rate of recidivism and this ordinance proposal aims to reduce their potential to reoffend while keeping residents safe. Labor costs for the fiscal impact for the city include review from consignee law offices of the proposed ordinance, which has already been completed prior to council review and likely is encapsulated with a retainer of consignee law. City administration leadership recommends the council review and discuss the proposed ordinance as it will be brought to council on October first this year for further discussion and potential approval.
So you're not asking for approval tonight just to discuss it?
If the council has any questions based on the ordinance that was included in the agenda packet, and I'd like to open that up now instead of just pushing it through tonight. And then we can push it for approval at the next meeting.
Uh, chief, I would just suggest that in the initial definition of loitering and prowling, it's very gender specific, uh, about males. Men are the only ones who are sexual predators. Uh, when you get to the second time, it, it goes into the definition of loitering and prowling much farther down in the ordinance, it does go more gender not specific with himself slash herself. I would recommend just making it a non-gender specific with offender, uh, suspect, whatever.
We can make that adjustment. That was just, uh, language from the state.
Yeah, I got you. I, I assumed that's why I was like, if it's gonna be our ordinance, uh, it might just be better just to take out the he and the him and the.
Do we know that'll be adjusted for the approval motion?
Have there been any, um, court challenges to this?
There have been, um, previously, and that typically dealt with the, uh, distance restrictions that were imposed by the city with the ordinance. Uh, I believe it was the city of Burlington had it extended to thirty-five hundred feet, which basically made it almost impossible or actually impossible to reside within the city of Burlington. Um, a lot of area municipalities have it set to fifteen hundred feet. Um, but that also has to take into consideration the volume of schools, parks. The list is quite exhaustive as you can see within the ordinance. Um, fifteen hundred feet within the city of Milton would have made it nearly impossible. It still was possible, but it was very limited for, or an offender to take up residency here. Using Google Maps, going to a distance of twelve hundred feet that provided more options for residency while still not opening up the entire city for residency for offenders. And that distance downsized was, um, I guess, seconded by consignee law.
So if we created this ordinance, what does that look like? Like what, how would we, how would that be implemented or what, what does that look like to? Uh, how would it be enforced? What does it look like to residents? What does it look like?
So if they are, if they are a sex offender, they need to register with the local police department. So if they fail to, that's already a violation of their sex offender registry requirements. What, in my prior position in Fort Atkinson, we would do residence checks annually with offenders. So if all of a sudden we look on the state registry and we have an offender that is not within the, you know, Milton Police Department or the city of Milton, the list for offenders that have approved residency within the city of Milton, that is a violation of the ordinance. So we would contact that offender, ask them if they're aware of the ordinance or not. They should be. Um, I've had several people already inquire here at Milton if there are any residency requirements, uh, which was what prompted this push for the ordinance. Um, so the violations are steep. Every day if they're in violation of the ordinance would be a separate offense. The fines are high, which is a result of us trying to push compliance and maintain safety within the community and that hold the offender accountable to, to abide by those ordinance restrictions, which is also declared within the res, or part of their registry in the state of Wisconsin. Um, so the two kind of complement one another. Um, Robert Fugate is the sex offender coordinator for the state of Wisconsin. So he helps coordinate a lot of those residence checks. And if there's any issues with that, um, he typically makes the municipality aware of that if they have, um, a residency requirement in place. And most probation and parole agents also reach out to the municipality to help set up residency if there is any dispute for requirements of, um, that twelve hundred foot restriction that, um, is in the proposed ordinance.
So twelve hundred is gonna, is what you're proposing?
That is my recommendation.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
Does that affect? I'm just, does that affect anybody currently? Like would any?
Those that are already within the city limits, they are, they would be grandfathered in for this ordinance. So it'd only impact anyone trying to seek residency past, you know, post approval of the ordinance.
So, so then we'll just see this on the first meeting in October?
Correct.
Any other questions or comments? If you think of anything, you can email the chief.
Thank you.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding the two thousand twenty-five joint powers agreement with Rock County.
Uh, so this joint powers agreement is a renewal, um, from pri, previous years. The city of Milton has an agreement with the Rock County Communications Center. They are the nine-one-one call taker or public safety answering point for the, within Rock County that the city of Milton utilizes. Uh, this agreement would allow us to continue utilizing Rock County nine-one-one system or the Rock County Public Safety Answering Point, um, as the routing center for any nine-one-one calls, um, from our city jurisdiction or nearby jurisdictions. Um, the only modification to this agreement is the date changed from prior years to enacted to allow us to cover in all of two thousand twenty-five. The memo that was attached just identifies the phone numbers associated with the city of Milton Police Department Lakeside Fire Rescue, um, and the frequencies utilized for our repeater system for the county. The city administration recommends approval of the joint powers agreement between Rock County and the city of Milton.
I'd move approval of the joint powers agreement between Rock County and the city of Milton.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Um, general items, committee reports?
Gathering place weekly update. Okay, this week. Well, we missed the one for Monday, which was coping with stress and anxiety. Hopefully you did that on your own. Tomorrow is writing club regarding, uh, memories and them, helping you write your memoir if you are interested. That's tomorrow at ten forty-five A.M. Line dance class tomorrow at five thirty P.M. That's five dollars for the single, ten dollars for a pair, if you'd like to join that. Uh, Thursday, October third, I believe I discussed this last time, but we're encouraging participation in the, uh, Sippin' Style Fall Fashion with clothing from A Grace. And there will be models showing the clothing. There are lots of clothes. We do this annually as part of the work with A Grace. And, um, there will be ten dollar admission, uh, for light snack and, uh, beverages provided. There were, uh, any of the benefits then for items that are sold, uh, are shared with A Grace. Pumpkin Fest, Sunday, October sixth, for children and grandchildren. Lots of games and crafts and also, uh, your pumpkin, being able to decorate your pumpkin, carve your pumpkin. And at the end, an additional pumpkin to have launching off the roof of the building. I mean, kids can't go up there, but their pumpkin be thrown off. And October nineteenth, the murder mystery party. Uh, you can work within your group, come with your nineteen twenties attire, thinking about a flapper dress or a boot suit. Uh, dinner mystery tickets are forty dollars apiece, which include your dinner and working through who did it.
Any other committee reports from anyone? Parks and Rec?
Oh, not, not a committee report, but, uh, I just want to, uh, encourage all of you to participate in, uh, Can Do's grand opening, which is gonna be Saturday, uh, September twenty-eighth from three to six P.M. I think we're really, really fortunate, uh, to have, uh, gained a, a really quality, long-term, uh, tenant uh, in that building. The possibility of having that go vacant again or very under, underutilized for long periods like it has been, uh, at some periods in the past, uh, is awful. And we've got a great organization, uh, with some really exciting things, uh, taking place. Um, I have, um, had a tour of the facility, as I know, uh, some of you have. But if you go through and, um, see what happens in that building, I think you'll be mightily impressed and, um, uh, very welcoming of, uh, this new organization to our community.
Okay, Parks and Rec met Monday? Does anybody have a committee report from Parks and Rec?
I'll speak on Parks and Rec. Um, we, Parks and Rec received a donation, uh, from the, uh, baseball league of, I'm sorry, what? That's Milton Storm, thank you. Uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Uh, some discussions were held on, uh, having, uh, donation boxes installed. There are currently donation boxes at the dog park and, um, unfortunately, they tend to be used for, uh, waste. Um, so this is a little better, uh, style donation box. And, uh, one also being placed at the splash pad. Um, and then there was some discussion about, uh, dog park cleanup and, uh, I believe that covers it.
I have a, a question about, um, Parks and Rec related to, um, the tennis action that we took. Has there been much discussion of kind of the change of character of what was envisioned for Cross Ridge, uh, with the tennis facility?
With the tennis facility, uh, one of the, uh, and I did speak with, uh, a few members of the public about this. Uh, the tennis facility, uh, there was a lot of fields, uh, planned for, uh, Cross Ridge Park. Uh, baseball fields, soccer fields, things like that. Um, the feeling was, you know, tennis courts, that's just another type of sporting facility to be used.
So there was?
There was, it wasn't negative.
Okay, that's what, there was no objection to it because as there in the long-term parks plan, was there any plan to develop those fields at all? I mean, I haven't heard from, I mean, I know it was talked about, but I don't know if there was any concrete planning.
There was no concrete planning at this time. Um, I am working with the YMCA right now with the possibility of them building some fields out in Cross Ridge Park, uh, but that's a work in progress, so.
I, I, I don't know whether it's the appropriate place or, 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 or time for this, but, you know, frankly, one of my concerns there is from, um, an open natural area uh, to essentially a pole barn type, um, structure in the middle of a, an, an open natural area. I'm all for the tennis.
Okay, and we'll, we'll be discussing that further on another agenda.
I just want to raise.
Okay. And, um, it would be great to email Paul that. Cause I don't want my head chopped off. The guillotine was coming down. Any, um, we are not going to let them eat cake. Um, chief, any further staff updates or reports?
Uh, staff reports, um, Superintendent Domon had, um, alluded to earlier. We had, uh, threats to the school district yesterday came out. So I just wanted to compliment our staff and their swift response. And Officer Schneider, um, who is kind of in a hybrid role, um, not in the schools essentially, but he worked the power shift the night before and powered through another eight-hour shift. So he, um, was in great shape for sixteen hours and, um, worked effortlessly with, um, and hand-in-hand with Janesville PD and Edgerton PD to, um, try to, um, get to the source of that threat and worked, um, was a point of contact with the school district on, um, pushing out, uh, media contacts and, um, helped kind of facilitate my release to the. uh media contacts and um helped kind of facilitate my release to the council. Um, and you know, bolstered presence at the schools. Um, so just wanted to, and it wasn't just Officer Schneider, but the rest of the officers that had presence in around the schools throughout yesterday and today and which would continue through the week, so just wanted to give a shout out to the staff for that. Um, the only other real um issue, not issue, um Craig Quarter, our officer, he completed phase one of the academy. Um, so we're twenty-five percent of the way through, no fail, a lot, a lot of it. Um, he's also been recognized by the um I guess recruit academy staff of being a natural leader within the group, so as I expected. Um, so all things are going well with our uh police recruit.
And my understanding is based on past experience, people can be charged for making those threats, right?
Yeah, yes, if those threats, if we had a facilitator for the threats, if we located the source, that person will be charged.
So it's against the law, to be clear, to make threats to.
It is very illegal, yes.
There were some questions floating around. It's like, why don't they make this illegal? And I'm like, pretty sure it is, but. Um, Ashley, I know you had a lot going on at the library.
Yes, we did. Um, we had a very successful first art walk and art work, art walk auction. Um, the auction was held last Tuesday and the library raised over ten thousand dollars for the continued development and maintenance of Story Gardens. So it was an amazing turnout. All eighteen butterfly wings were um sold. Um, we had many, and many people made that night happen from the artists who are art walk subcommittee to the people who bid on the items, so um, it was just an awesome, awesome event. Um, we also had our Monarch Festival on September seventh, which was the official grand opening of Story Gardens. Uh, we're still working on Story Gardens, but we, I felt like it was, we had enough done. We had this amazing space outside, so let's kind of open it up. Um, and it was also the premiere of the Reluctant Monarch, a play that was written by Jim Like. Um, we did record the play, um, and it will be available on our Facebook page and YouTube either tonight or tomorrow. So very excited about that. That was an amazing little play. Um, the library is collaborating with the Milton Youth Coalition Coalition and Charlas to promote safe places for teens in Milton um with a punch card system. So we're just encouraging teens to kind of find their space um by going to the library, Charlas, to hang out, um, to do homework, to get creative, um, with some little incentives of free books and coffee, so. I've already given out a few. I don't know if Charla you have given, so um teens are coming to us, so it's awesome. And then speaking of the Milton Youth Coalition, um, we are hosting our third annual homecoming bonfire next Friday after the homecoming game, so. Um, it's a, the whole event, including food and music, is free for high school students, so very excited to do another one of those.
And I, I went to the Monarch Festival and the play and everything, and it was really just a lovely day and it was a great place, so we have a lot of talent in Milton and the library is a great place to showcase that in all ways, so Jenny?
Uh, so today is National Voter Registration Day and that is um all across the country. There have been people posting things about um registering to vote and in the city of Milton, we have had sixteen new registrations. Uh, since the last election, we've actually had a hundred and forty-seven new registrations uh within the city of Milton. So it's been very active in the election world. Uh, we received our absentee ballots today and by Thursday, there'll be two hundred and ninety-eight going out, plus then twenty-six will be at, will be administered at Milton Senior Living. Um, so we do have our full schedule ready with, um, I believe we have three people right now for election officials that are backups. Um, plus there'll be a couple of our election officials working at other municipalities where they need assistance. Um, so I'm really excited about that and um like I said, we're just trying to work through this upcoming election.
And once you register, you're good. You're registered for the November election. There's nothing taking place between now and the election on voter registration or.
There is not, there is not.
All right, Kelsey?
I've been working on the twenty twenty-five budget. Paul and I have met with all of leadership staff to get their um changes for the year. Um, Paul and I met today to sort of fine-tune some of the items. The last big thing I think that we're waiting for is insurance and we hope to have those numbers by next week. On the first meeting in October, you'll be reviewing the nonprofit requests that have been received. Um, that deadline was the fifteenth to receive those and I did receive three. And then also at the first meeting in October, you'll see a draft annual budget presentation.
Okay, Paul?
Budget, strategic plan, development. Same repeating over the last uh several meetings.
Okay, Paul really doesn't have much to do at all. All right, team building. So I tried to give you a little heads up. Sorry, I forgot about team building till this afternoon. So, the question is, what is your favorite variety of apple? And how, what's your favorite way to eat an apple?
Ginger golden caramel apple. I'm going with rotten. And I said rotten, yes. My mic is on rotten. And favorite way to eat it with the core. What is wrong with you? You don't have enough time. Mine is Fuji with caramel. Just dip it in caramel.
Mine's Zestar. Have you had that yet? Hawks has it, very limited in the beginning and now it's my favorite, but you can only get it the first two weekends.
So we can't get it now?
I don't think you can. They said they're planting more and it takes five to seven years, but I've never, that's what we use for our scones. You can eat it in our scone. There you go.
We have it there.
Well, I'll go since we did Zestar, I'll go with the Honeycrisp and just uh, you know, uh straight eating it. Uh, I don't know whether you know, but both Zestar and Honeycrisp apples are University of Minnesota apples. Uh, developed by the University of Minnesota. Um, and our daughter is an attorney who works in the intellectual property department for the University of Minnesota and she gets to test some of the new apples that um the University of Minnesota is, is uh working on.
I believe a large percentage of the apples out there came from University of Minnesota.
I did not collaborate with Ryan or Bill for this team building question, but as always, we're impressed with the knowledge.
I'll go. My favorite is Sugar Bees and I like caramel apples with peanuts on them.
University, University of Minneapolis or Minnesota has developed twenty-nine different apple varieties, by the way.
So that'll be our next quiz. How many apple varieties can you name that the University of Minnesota developed?
I like Honeycrisp and I eat them.
I like the wine sap and I like them baked in cake.
I like Honeycrisp and I like Granny Smith and um, and I like Macintosh. And I like them with caramel and apple crisp or in apple pies. If anybody is, you know, wanting to bake for me.
I like Honeycrisp and I also like it with peanut butter, but also apple wines are very good. North Leaf has a great one.
If I could give a serious answer, I'd agree with Teresa and um Ashley, Honeycrisp with peanut butter.
But we really loved your funny answer.
They're both good. They're both good.
Jenny?
Uh, my favorite are Pink Delicious and, and my favorite way to eat them is in apple cider donuts.
Well, the threat of the removal of the head of the mayor. Just exercising your, your legal authority. We appreciate that.
Haven't given it much thought. Uh, so I guess my favorite variety is the, is the kind that's in a hot apple pie with a scoop of uh vanilla ice cream on top.
And? Is it like an apple pie shot? All right, next meeting date is October first, two thousand twenty-four. And is there a motion to adjourn? All those in favor?